Board of County Commissioners, which will actually be preceded this evening by two separate public hearings. And I just want to take a minute to explain this so you all know what we're going to go through. Lots of roll calls, lots of gavel banging, and hopefully a very good outcome. We're going to have two separate public hearings starting right now. The first will be on the adoption of a project labor agreement for Passaic County Public Works contracts over $5 million. And the second public hearing, which we're going to begin right after the first one. Okay. And the second one is on the adoption of a responsible contractor and subcontractor policy for Passaic County Public Works contracts over $250,000. So we're going to have both of those hearings, and then we're going to start our meeting, at which point we'll actually adopt the resolutions, those two resolutions, as part of our consent agenda. So for those of you who are here to talk about those, each of the hearings is going to give you a chance to do that. The actual adoption will follow as part of our consent agenda in the main meeting. So I hope that was helpful. And with that, Lou, would you do a roll call and announcement of the public hearing for the PLA hearing?
This public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public on the adoption of the project labor agreement for Passaic County Public Works contract over $5 million. If adopted, contractors will be required to enter into a project labor agreement as a condition of performing work on the project, uh, public works contracts over $5 million. A copy of the project labor agreement has been available for review in the office of the Board of County Commissioners, Passaic County Administration Building, 401 Grand Street, Room 223, Patterson, New Jersey. Passaic County Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic on May 21st, 2024, adopted resolution R-24-407, which calls for a public hearing scheduled for tonight, June 25th, 2024, at 5:15 in the Passaic County Administration Building, 401 Grand Street, Room 220, Patterson, New Jersey. The time, date, and location of this public hearing was advertised in both the Herald News and the Record on May 30th, 2024. County Commissioners Cruz, Duffy, Gallo.
Here.
James, Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here. Can I have a motion to open the public hearing?
I'll move it.
Second.
County Commissioners, Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. Does anyone present desire to be heard on the adoption of a project labor agreement for Passaic County Public Works contracts over $5 million?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Just want to make sure, Deputy Director, everyone understood what we're going for. This is for, this is the public hearing on the labor agreement, right?
Yep.
Yep.
I want to make sure I give everyone an opportunity if they want to speak.
Good evening. Tom Kelly, President of Passaic County Central Labor Council. I rise in support of the project labor agreement. Um, it will ensure quality construction for Passaic County into the future. It's been 24 years in the making. Besides that, ensures good quality options and jobs for Passaic County children, good quality career jobs, and that's what we're looking for. And we hope everyone else joins us in support of that. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Brian Jackson, President of Passaic County Building Trades. I am too in support of the project labor agreement and responsible contractor language that is being presented tonight to ensure jobs for our residents and all our unions that are present tonight. And I just want to extend my thanks to all you.
Anybody else? Okay. We have a motion. Second.
And if the, um, if the record, um, let the record show that Orlando Cruz joined the meeting at 5:23, and we'll be voting on, County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James. Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
Lozera, seconded by Cruz. County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. All right. Thanks, everybody, for following along. That brings us to our second public hearing of this evening, which is on the adoption of a responsible contractor and subcontractor policy. Lou, would you announce the public hearing and take the roll call?
The public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public on the adoption of the responsible contractor and subcontractor policy for the Passaic County Public Works contracts over, um, $250,000. If adopted, the new policy will require all contractors and subcontractors to execute a contract or responsibility certification and as a condition of the performance, performing work on a public, um, I'm sorry, on a public works contract over $250,000. Supporting documentation of the resolution, uh, R-24-408, has been available for review in the office of the Board of County Commissioners, Passaic County Administration Building. Passaic, Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, um, Passaic County Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic on May 21st, 2024, adopted resolution R-24-408, which calls for the public hearing scheduled for tonight, June 25th, 2024, at 5:15 PM in the Passaic County Administration Building, Grand Street, Room 220, Patterson, New Jersey. The time, date, and location of this public hearing was advertised in both the Herald News and the Record on May 30th, 2024. A revised public notice was advertised in both the Herald News and the Record on June 13th, 2024.
No, just for the record, I know yours, the, um, public hearing states a different amount, but it was amended and advertised on June 13th, 2024.
Thank you, Council, for clearing that up. Uh, so, roll call.
Okay. Uh, County Commissioners Cruz.
Here.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here. So, does anyone present desire to be heard on the adoption of a responsible contractor and subcontractor policy for Passaic County Public Works?
They all laughed, and that hurt.
Tom, welcome, welcome back to the podium. Haven't, haven't seen you in four minutes.
I don't know who got the better view of me, anyway. Again, Tom Kelly, President of Passaic County Central Labor Council. Uh, my rise in support of the responsible contractor language as the voice of over 20,000 union members in Passaic County. Some of them obviously reflected here. It is, uh, a way of guaranteeing that when Passaic County hires contractors, they're getting good quality contractors that aren't cheating, that aren't skipping out, that are providing good quality craftsmanship and a quality product to Passaic County, and the Passaic County residents are getting what they paid for. Thank you.
Seeing no one at the podium, I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
James. I keep saying, Lapore.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. Can I have a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. All right. Thank you all very much for your contributions. Uh, and we're going to move on to our regular meeting now, where these two, among many other things, will be adopted as part of our consent agenda. With that, welcome again to the June 25th, 2024, meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners. Lou, can we have a roll call and announcement of the open public meeting?
Yep. Uh, County Commissioners Cruz.
Here.
Duffy. Gallo.
Here.
James. Lapore.
Here.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Here.
Director Bartlett.
Here.
Ladies and gentlemen, notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location included in the annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk post in the administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation. Everyone, please rise. Mr. Cruz, do you lead us?
Please join me in doing our pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Father Ryan, would you grace us with an invocation?
We have such enthusiasm here tonight and such a crowd, I'd say, let's have a collection. The director, not for me. Let us bow our heads in prayer. When you arise in the morning, give thanks for the morning light, for your life and for your strength. Give thanks for your food and for the joy of living. If you see no other reason for giving thanks, the fault lies within us. We pray this through God's love and grace forever and ever. Amen.
Thank you very much, Father Ryan. Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who've died while serving in the United States Armed Forces, and also all those who have died, uh, here in Passaic County from COVID-19, a group that now numbers 2,301 residents. I also want to acknowledge the passing yesterday, suddenly and unexpectedly, of, uh, Bob Jeffrey, the husband of Linda Nardone. Many of you know Linda from Wayne. Uh, and let's keep her and her late husband, Bob, in our prayers as well. Can I have a motion for approval of the minutes of June 11, 2024?
So moved.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore. Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
That brings us to approval of proclamations. Can I have a motion for approval of proclamations one through five?
Move it.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera.
Yes.
Director Bartlett.
Yes. Administrators report. Matthew?
Oh, Director, thank you. Um, first, we have on our, on my agenda, the presentation of a proclamation and certificates to the Lakeland Lancers baseball team for winning this year's Passaic County baseball tournament. If I could have Coach Ed Skoren come up with the team and Commissioner Cruz come down?
Well, why don't we begin by, uh, congratulating our Passaic County tournament winners? Let's give them a big round of applause. I will now, um, read this into the record to memorialize your victory this year. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic has the desire to recognize the Lakeland baseball team for winning the Passaic County baseball championship tournament, which took place at Hinchcliffe Stadium for the first time in over 18 years. Whereas the assistant coach, Rick Capozzi, threw the first pitch, and he celebrates his 50th anniversary with the Lakeland baseball team. The Lancers launched two home runs in the top of the first inning to eat up all the momentum of the championship and historical atmosphere. And Mickey Gillian and his Lakeland, Lakeland baseball team seemed to be stuck on the repeat in the latter stages as the Passaic County tournament continued. And whereas two batters into Tuesday night's championship game at Hinchcliffe Stadium, the sophomore catcher hit a two-run homer to ignite a four-run first inning, he had done the exact same thing in the semifinals three days earlier. And whereas the Lancers dedicated their victory to longtime coach Dick Shutt, who died last July, guiding the program from 1970 to 1989, winning state championships in '74 and '76. Whereas this is Lakeland's fifth Passaic County title, finished third in the state group, uh, Group Two, and ranked 25th overall in the entire state. So now therefore let it be proclaimed by the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners that it hereby publicly recognizes and applauds the Lakeland baseball team and coaches for bringing home an outstanding victory for their school and for the entire Passaic County community. Let it be further proclaimed that this board wishes the team and their coaches continue success in their journey ahead. Congratulations, guys.
Well, I didn't bring anything prepared, but, uh, I'd just like to, um, say congratulations to the boys. We didn't get everybody here. Obviously, it's, uh, summer break now, so a lot of people went on vacation. But I do have three members here that I'd like to acknowledge that are moving on to college and playing college baseball. First one is Brian Hoffman. He will be playing at Albright University. The other one is, uh, Rowan Conway. He'll be playing at Stevens in Maryland. And the third gentleman is Xavier Diaz. He will be playing at Fairleigh Dickens University in, uh, Madison. Lakeland baseball has a, a long tradition of winning. Um, they've only had four head coaches since 1959, and, uh, we, we dedicated this season to a longtime coach, uh, who I played under, Dick Shutey, and he recently passed away. Um, and the boys dedicated their season to it. So it was very special that they won the Passaic County tournament, something that eluded him in all his years. He had won state championships in '74, '76, and '81, but was never able to win the Passaic County tournament. Uh, this year, the boys really had a miraculous season. They, uh, were finalists, runner-ups in the, uh, state finals as well. We just came that short of winning the state finals as well. Uh, they finished the season 20 and eight, and, uh, I wish them the best in their futures in, in college.
This is a, uh, nice stack of certificates for the team members and the coaches. And since we have three of them here, we'll present them with their certificates. So, uh, Brian, Rowan, and Xavier, please accept these certificates on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
Ryan? Oh, he has the other two, okay.
Yep. And anyone, friends and family that want to join us for a group photo, please do so at this time.
Thank you very much. I'll pass the certificates on to the rest of the boys. I'm sorry, there's one thing I'd like to just add because I am a Passaic County resident. I've lived in, uh, Wanaqu. I grew up in Patterson and Riverside, but I've lived in Wanaqu all my life. It was really special to play at Hinchcliffe Stadium this year. Uh, I'm very, um, proud that we're taking, uh, advan, you know, we're recognizing the history there. Uh, it, it's really coming along. It looks great, and personally, I'm very proud of it. I really liked playing there, Hinchcliffe Stadium, and the entire falls. I'm glad that we're redoing it. Thank you.
Matt, you were a baseball player in your youth, right?
Yeah, I was a member of the 2003 County Championship Team Director. Thanks for bringing that up.
Fellow county champion, right here on the podium.
Uh, Director, next, we don't have them with us, but we also just want to recognize the, uh, Pompton Lake Cardinals baseball team for winning the, um, NJSIAA Group One State Championship at Veterans Park in Hamilton. They couldn't be with us, but congratulations to the Cardinals. Um, next, as a recognition of, of June as Hunger Awareness Month, we have a presentation on food security efforts by Passaic County Department of Human Services by, uh, Dr. Ardi Kakar. So, Dr. Kakar, I will turn it over to you.
All right.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. I wanted to talk a little bit about the Hunger Awareness Month for the month of June. Uh, the main goal of this is to increase the awareness of the need in the county, um, for food. Um, so we did a little survey with some of the pantries who were willing to respond. So out of the 21 pantries that responded, uh, this shows that nearly all our municipalities are being served by the 21 pantries that responded, and this is only 50% of the pantries that we have in the county. Uh, some of the pantries actually requested us to take them off the list because they don't have enough produce to give out. So there is a huge need, uh, that we all need to address. As we see the operating days for the counties, uh, for the, for the pantries across the county, uh, you'll see a lot of them are operating during the weekdays. Uh, some of them are operating during the weekends, Saturdays, and there's no one operating on Sunday. And one of the biggest barriers is the lack of volunteers and support for Sundays, which is one of the big days when the families are out, um, doing groceries and need groceries. So in addition to food, there are other services that are needed, and some of the pantries are providing some of those services, and this shows the gap as well in the services that is needed. If you see, there's only two pantries doing SNAP enrollment, which is a big issue in the county. Um, so we have, uh, as we go further into the presentation, we are addressing some of those needs through our new programs that we are coming across. Uh, average visit per month is two across the pantries. So you can visit the pantry twice a month for most of the pantries, and, um, the duplicated number of visits for the year is 531,000. So there's a huge need, and, um, that's why I wanted to come up and talk about our hunger awareness right now. So if you see the other needs that we have that are not being met is the WIC enrollment and the intake assessments, as well as hygiene products, which is really needed, and, um, the families need them, even including the diapers as well. So if you compare that to our impact, impact Passaic, uh, project that we are doing across the country, which is a collective impact across, uh, the different sectors and the nonprofits and the public-private partnership, this is the most searched categories by our residents. If you see housing, as we all know, is the biggest need with 46%, uh, followed by health, and then by food. So these are the basic needs, if you look into the Maslow's hierarchy, that we need to address. Um, the biggest barriers that the pantries that responded to our survey are definitely volunteers, delivery vehicles, um, lack of meat, a lack of, uh, freezers and storage and space. So, and also culturally appropriate food. So these were some of the needs that they had identified. Um, so one of the things that we are putting together, and I want to thank our county administrator because this has been a long, long project, uh, coming, uh, County Council's Office, definitely, uh, the Roads Department. So we have our first mobile food pantry that we awarded on June 11th. Uh, the award went to Kumak, who is, uh, which is one of our, uh, partners in the community, and they will be following with our Hope family that we have, the Hope One and Hope Two for prior recovery. We will be using our Hope, uh, food, mobile food pantry to cover all the municipalities in the county and providing, hopefully, fresh produce, increasing access to food. And in addition to the food on the pantry, we'll also have temporary assistance services. So there will be, uh, assistance in filling up, uh, SNAP applications, WIC applications, assistance in connecting to wraparound services that will be within the mobile pantry, and we'll work with all the municipalities, like we did last time with the Recovery Month, to make sure all municipalities are going to be covered, and we'll have an outreach calendar once that gets done. So we'll release that, and it'll be on our website for any resident to, um, see. So they don't have to come down to, um, Patterson to pick up the food. They can pick it up from their own municipality as ordered. Then extending our partnership, we are also wanting to announce our Emergency Food Provider Coalition. This will be led by our partners, food providers, and we, as a county, will be there to support them because our goal is to have them lead because they are the, uh, experts of this. So we are hoping to, uh, have trauma-informed, uh, cooperative collaboration across this, uh, coalition. We'll also want to increase SNAP and WIC, uh, as we saw those were the needs that were identified in the survey that we got. We don't have one, uh, collection of data across the county, so that's one of the other goals that the coalition has. Um, and then by providing support and sharing resources, we also want to have, make sure that all the pantries are using their resources, um, and maximizing on it, so we're not wasting food. Um, and also hopefully creating a healthy food access map across the county that'll be accessible on our website, hopefully towards the end of this year. Um, so that's our goal. We are also, in addition to the same spirit, working with our Northern Jersey partners. We have some, uh, here in our support with Bergen County and Hudson County to create across the state, um, sharing of resources and best practices, so we're able to move forward together as a Northern Jersey collaborative as well. So this is our, um, Hunger Awareness Month, uh, presentation, and we actually have some of our providers here, um, to celebrate it with us. So, um, I don't know who's here, but I think we have some certificates for that.
We have some certificates. Sandy and I will join you in just a minute to present those. I want to give my colleagues, though, the opportunity to ask any questions about , uh, Ardi's presentation. Certainly, for me, one of the surprises was how few of these facilities are able to provide help with things like WIC and SNAP applications, which seem so basic to the issue of food insecurity. Uh, are there ways in which either your office or other county offices, like Board of Social Services, could be better partnering with private nonprofit allies?
Yes. So one of the goals of, uh, um, Food Coalition is to work with Kumak, who is actually just certified as a SNAP, uh... So we had applied for Robert Wood and Johnson Grant, um, a few months ago, and it was awarded to the county. So Kumak's leading, and Board and us are in partnership with them. Um, so we can, you know, work... so we can, you know, work together and address the needs in the county.
Excellent. Great, well, let's.
Ardi, I just want to say, that HOPE truck is just so amazing. Going out to the people and bringing what they need. And you know, one of the things that I've always said is, the more we can get out through a network, the more that people will know what we have to offer. And using this fan in addition to the other HOPE fans, this is just a home run for everybody, I believe. So, congratulations on that.
Thank you.
Yeah, as a member of the committee, Human Services Committee, I know Commissioner Duffy and Commissioner James aren't with us, but we've worked on this for a while, and there's been many conversations and back and forth, and I'm just finally, you know, I'm happy to see that we're at this point, that we can finally get the services out to the community.
Yes, it actually, it rolled in on Thursday, and it looks really pretty. It's there on the board. So, hopefully soon you'll see it on the road. Thank you.
Terrific. Yeah, let's present those certificates that folks are here. Ardi, you should be here, too. All right. So, here are the folks from nine of our partner organizations that are here with us. Nicole Davis from the Center for Food Action. Is Nicole here? Okay. Catholic Charities, Father English is represented by Carlos Willden. We'll get those to him. Thank you very much. Oasis is here with Jim Walsh. Thank you, Jim. St. Paul's is here, Richard C. Williams. The Food Brigade, Carmen and Karen DiMarco. Everybody thought those were Union T-shirts, right? You got it? And Kumak is here. We just heard from Jessica. The YMCA of Patterson, Byron Moran. United Way of Passaic, Mary, are you here? Mary Seles. Finally, always welcome on this side of the Passaic River, the Bergen County Food Task Force, Patrick Fallon.
No, I just want to thank all of you for being here, and we'll continue to move forward and work together.
Thank you.
Stay here.
Matt, that was terrific. Anything else on your agenda today?
That's all I have for tonight, Director.
All right. Well, that brings us to county commissioner reports. I wasn't here at our last meeting, so I just want to take a moment and thank the Democratic voters here in Passaic County for seeing fit to send my colleague Sandy and I, along with our running mates, onto the general election. It was a long and challenging campaign, but I'm grateful for the support of those who had our backs and looking forward to being part of the contest to protect American democracy come November. So, that's all I have. Sandy?
This is a big night for a lot of us who are here tonight. And I have to, huge thank you to Tom Kelly, Patrick, Brian, and Scott. Now, I guess it was about two months ago when I met you guys down in Heldon, your hall, and we started talking about PLAs and, you know, and we came to the conclusion that we needed to sit down at the table. We need to sit down and talk about how can we move Passaic County forward and do the right thing. And with that, we've had two or three meetings here at the county. Again, Patrick, Tom, Scott, and Brian, along with myself and Commissioner Lepore, our administrator, Matt Jordan. Am I forgetting anybody? Yeah, and we were able to bring this to fruition, but it wasn't just us because it had to be the whole commissioner board. And when I can, I can honestly say to you that the entire commissioner board supported this resolution. We had to do a couple of public hearings and whatnot in between, but we're here tonight to vote on this resolution and move forward with a great working relationship with some great people who, I know you guys are trained, you know what you're doing, and the work you do is second to none. So, with that, I thank you for giving us this opportunity to work with you, and we look forward to moving forward and doing more jobs with you guys.
Thank you, Sandy. Orlando?
Yes, thank you, Director. I just want to take this moment to congratulate all of the graduates of Passaic County, all of our high schools up and down, all 16 municipalities, especially the ones at our tech school, Passaic County Tech, where I had the privilege of participating there, along with some of my other colleagues, and just seeing the excitement in all of those students' faces to be able to reach this milestone. This class of 2024 was, as a freshman, this was their first graduation because their eighth grade year was during COVID. So, this was their first experience of, you know, walking down that aisle, so to speak, and being able to participate and enjoy this moment with their family. So, I thought that that was important to highlight. Also, I want to congratulate and thank all those that participated in our Juneteenth panel discussion, which was on Juneteenth. Director, you were the moderator, and you did a phenomenal job. We had some great panelists, County Superintendent Keisha Drakeford, Talisa Coleman, who's the director of the Board of Social Services, Talina Queen, who's Patterson's poet laureate, and Craig Redman, a renowned musician and bandleader of the Sea Dreams. And it was a different type of event that really highlighted the impact that some of these services have on our community when we talk about the arts and education and still highlighting the struggles that we all face and see just, you know, here in 2024 as we watch the news and still hear about the struggles and the impact that our community faces. So, we just have to keep that in mind, and I ask everyone to keep that, keep that in mind when you make these decisions, when we're out there working, and that we have that insight of the issues and struggles that our community still faces today in this day and age. And I think that that also just kind of segues to, you know, the moment that will be very shortly where we're voting on this agreement with our union workers and ensuring that everyone has a fair share and their, a fair share, fair opportunity, and just the work that the labor unions do to empower that next generation. And so, this is why this is so important and momentous, and I want to thank my colleagues for supporting this as well and us having this conversation and you guys out there entrusting us with this decision to make sure that you guys have that opportunity available. So, thank you.
Absolutely right, Orlando. I just want to add to your comment about tech. Just extraordinary job by our team up there. Both of those days of graduations were in the mid to upper 90s, and the way that they managed to keep the students cool, and it's tough to keep the stands cool in that sunlight, but having the folks on hand that were necessary if people had medical issues and everything that they were able to do to keep people cool. Great work, as always, by our folks up at tech. Nick?
Director, I just want to congratulate a friend of mine that just got sworn in as a superior judge in Passaic County. His name is Bill Marsala. Thank you.
Resolution number three is, had a lot of conversation about it tonight,
responsible contractor subcontractor policy for Passaic County Public Works contracts over $250,000. Resolution number four is a project labor agreement for all public work contract, public work contracts over $5 million. And keeping in the labor theme, resolution number five is a resolution ratifying the memorandum of agreement between the County of Passaic, the New Jersey State Police Benevolent Association Local 265, the Passaic County Prosecutor's Office of Spirit Corps Officers Association, representing the employees of Passaic County Prosecutor's Office. And the reason that I talked about all three of them, I would like to acknowledge my fellow members of my committee, Director and Deputy Director Sandy Lozera. But I also want to acknowledge the hard work put into all this conversation by our administrator, Matt Jordan, and our county council, Nadej Alatwalder. None of this would have been possible without their participation and their hard work. And while I'm asking for the support of Resolution Three and Four, also number five, while you guys are out working hard, we have our 265 local of the Sheriff's Department and also our prosecutors protecting you while you guys are working. So, I want to acknowledge them and all the hard work that Matt and Nadej put into it. And that's all I have, Director.
Thank you very much, Pat. So, in the absence of communications, for those of you who are following along, we're down to letter K. This is the oral portion. You have a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. So, this is the part where members of the public can have their say about anything they'd like. You get three minutes, and we ask you to begin with your name and address. So, have at it.
See, now you're showing off.
I just, when I saw the Lakeland baseball players honored in their coachboard of Hinchcliffe Stadium, recently, the Passaic County Central Labor Council, Passaic County Buildings and Trades, and the Passaic County Education Association took 150 kids to Hinchcliffe Stadium for a game. What a miracle. The game is the same day that they honored, they decided they were going to take the Negro League stats and bring them into MLB. We have 150 kids at Hinchcliffe Stadium, bringing them through the Negro League Museum, and all of a sudden, you see Channel 2 pull up, 4, 5, 7. I was like, what the hell's going on? MLB, after all these years, decided to take those stats and include them, and it changes the books. But that's the other thing. I mean, we're talking about jobs and getting jobs for kids in construction, but, and you guys are aware of it, the CLC, the Buildings and Trades, the Passaic County Education Association, we're out here every day in these communities doing stuff like that. Two weeks later, we're pulling tanks in Clifton. You know, the food pantry, which Carlos was here from Father English. We donate over 30,000 pounds of food to him every Thanksgiving like clockwork. So, it's more than about jobs. It's more than about good construction. It's about what we do here in the community, as a community, and that's why I'm such strong supporter of the thing. But I also with Hinchcliffe, it triggered me because it was a miracle. We were there that day. We're going through the Negro League Museum, and all of a sudden, you say, what's Channel 2 doing here for? And all of a sudden, then it all came up. So, good stuff. Thank you very much.
I'm back again also. Good evening again. I just want to, again, extend my thanks to everybody who was in those meetings. Again, Sandy, Matt, Pat. Again, thank you guys so much because for me, this, it's a fast-moving train. However, colleagues before me, they've tried to get this thing done, and I'm just so overwhelmingly pleased that we are getting this done, and this is a great start to a long-lasting relationship. I want to thank everybody from every union that came out here tonight. You guys represented. You guys got the call, and you showed up. And I want to extend my thanks to Tom Kelly and all you guys again. Thank you.
Matt Kelleher, Business Agent Plumbers Local 24. Sandy, my friends here, Pat, we've worked together to move this thing ahead to get a project labor agreement, responsible contractor limits. These trades behind me and all the trades, they get it. They get more Passaic County members into the programs. I had my last two days. I talked to Pat, talked to some of the Matt people here today. I have seven members from Passaic County, most of them from the VOTEC. Pat, you and I had a conversation, looking to get into Local 24. We're reviewing everything, back and forth. We all get it around here. Now, the importance is projects coming with AFL Investment Trust Fund. There's a groundbreaking coming in Patterson on Straight Street. Brian Norton from the AFL is coming here. You're going to have all, Tom Kelly, the president of trades, and all the affiliates and agents going for a groundbreaking with union pension money. So, we continue. We want to help and support you. We support the people of us. And again, I thank all the commissioners for their help. God bless you.
Director, seeing no one else at the podium, I move to close the public portion.
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes, thank you all for your comments. So, that brings us to the consent agenda, L1 through L47. I understand from council, there's no late starters or executive session. And as Commissioner Lepore pointed out, this includes items three and four. So, with that, are there any commissioners that want any items removed from the consent agenda and voted separately? Seeing none, can I take a motion to adopt consent agenda L1 through L47?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Lepore, seconded by Cruz. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. New business.
Personnel?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes.
Bills? Move the bills?
Second.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lozera?
Yes.
Director Bartlett?
Yes. Anything else before I call for a motion to adjourn?
Nope.
Okay.
It was approved, in case you guys missed that. All right, now I'll take that motion to adjourn.
Move for adjournment?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.